Calling the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, November 7th, 2023, meeting to order. I ask Commissioner Couch if she will open us with an indication.
Please bow your heads. Your heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for this time together to conduct the county's business. Lord, as we approach this season of Thanksgiving, we are so grateful for all the blessings you've bestowed upon our county. We thank you for our citizens, for Columbia County staff, for our sheriff's officers, our firemen and women, and our EMT workers. Lord, we ask that you would continue to protect us, you would continue your favor upon us, and continue your love to us. Be with us now as we work through these agenda items and help us to do all things in your will. In your most holy and precious name, I pray. Amen.
And for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the five United States. To the republic. One nation. Fine. Beautiful.
The records show we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the October 17th, 2023, reading in your packet. If you've had a chance to review them, accept a move, a motion to approve them.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept them as presented. Second?
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. And are we adding F1 to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for your approval, we have the addition of item I-2A, the Doctor's Hospital 50th Anniversary Proclamation.
It is added. Believe we have a special recognition, Commissioner Couch. Proclamation for retired teachers, retired educators.
Whereas the governor of the state of Georgia has proclaimed Sunday, November 5th, 2023, as Retired Educators Day in Georgia, and whereas there are more than 142,000 retired educators in Georgia who have touched the lives of generations of people, whereas the retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of their communities, often continuing to be a major source of insight and direction and education for our state and nation, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize these individuals for their time and commitment to bettering our community, our state, and our country. Now, therefore, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners do hereby express our gratitude for the work done by retired educators and call upon the citizens of Columbia County to honor retired educators in an appropriate manner. Signed the 7th day of November, 2023.
Thank you so much. I'm Angela Stokes. I'm president of Columbia County Retired Educators Association, and to my right is Joyce Mosley, one of our members who is here tonight as well. As you can imagine, once a teacher leaves a classroom, their work is not done. We are heavily involved in our community. We do a silent auction fundraiser every year, and we give a scholarship to a current Columbia County teacher who has gone back to work on a graduate degree. We volunteer with various organizations throughout the county, and as a group, when we meet every month, we are doing donations to Columbia County Care's Food Bank, and we also work with, making blankets with Project Linus, which gives blankets to children from newborn to 18 years old who are in need. So, thank you so much for recognizing us, and I will take this back to our meeting when we meet again and read this to everybody. Thank you so much.
We also have some folks from leadership Columbia County here tonight, I believe. If you are, would you please stand up and tell us your name and where do you work? Welcome. Thanks for coming. The Boy Scout? We got a Boy Scout? My slide in? Why don't you stand up and give us your name, school, rank, your troop? Come on now. We're not going to go forward till you do it. I think that's about as far as I got in the Boy Scouts.
A tenderfoot.
Welcome. Thanks for coming. Commissioners, on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items have been through the necessary committee and received the necessary votes to be placed on this agenda, so if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept one motion to approve all.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second?
Are there any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes. On to the debate. I believe we have some fire trucks.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the purchase of a fire pumper from Pierce Manufacturing in the amount of $801,000.
Chief Wallen will present this item.
Oh, you bring the big guns in, okay.
And the next item. But I just wanted to reiterate, the reason these are coming straight to commission is because of the purchase program with Pierce for stock equipment. You have a 30-day timeline from the time you say, "I want it," to complete the process. So, it's a press timeline, so it needs to come straight. We're already three almost.
Want to give us another thing? Okay, so the first item is the pumper, $801,000. It is going to be ready hopefully by the end of June versus the 40-month on the custom build, and it will be replacing a 1996 pumper. We're getting it off of the NPP.gov contract.
And do we sell the truck that it will be replacing?
Yes, the 1996 will be auctioned off.
Is it in good shape? No?
I drove it when I was at a fire station. That's how old that thing is.
Don't have to get personal.
So, Chief, often we have questions about whether there's lots of bells and whistles on these. Is there extra bells and whistles, or this is stock?
It is stock. We, because of the timeline, we were able to get in a couple of the items that we wanted, the particular transmission and engine and some few custom changes, the color scheme that we wanted. Vibrating seats are only available for the front row, but we did put in for that.
And you can't hide money, can you?
Bells, whistles, and lights.
Vibrating seats.
But those are stock.
The President's here, no need to report. Any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Second, all in favor of a pumper with vibrating seats.
This sign up is a...
Make a motion to approve the purchase of a heavy rescue unit from Pierce Manufacturing. I'm sorry. In the amount of $767,436.
Your turn.
Same program.
Same program. This will be purchased with 1722 sploshed. It is a heavy rescue versus the light rescues that we have typically in our fleet now. They're limited to two individuals. The heavy rescue will be able to accommodate up to five, as well as the space and the gross vehicle weight. We push the limit now with the equipment that we put on it, which limits what we can do in space and in weight, and we more than double the weight limit and the space, the storage space for equipment. So, these don't carry water. They're carrying all rescue equipment, medical equipment, and so forth. So, that's why we're moving to the heavy rescue, quite frankly, because of the price increase. They've more than doubled on the light rescue. It's not that much difference. And this will also be purchased through the NPP.gov contract.
Heavy do we have? The first one?
This will be the first.
First one.
And the seats?
No.
No?
They're regular.
Normal seats. Any other questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. He just bought himself a...
He didn't even give him a hard time.
Thank you, sir.
Chief. Sheriff and the Fire Department tend to get whatever they need, for sure. No questions asked. Okay, I believe we have an appointment of a trustee and somebody who wanted to speak. Mr. Foddle? Will just please state your name and address for the record and take five minutes.
My name is Amon Foddle. I live 3503 Lost Tree Lane, 30907. So, I'm in District 1. The reason I'm here today is because I'm concerned about what I perceive as too much, too many book reconsiderations at the Columbia County Library, and I've brought several books that are up for reconsideration next week, and I had, you know, I read them to try to see why these were so dangerous for kids to get, you know, to be in the library, and I couldn't figure out why after reading them. But when I saw that Dr. Caraway was nominated to be on the Library Board of Trustees, I remembered when she was superintendent of the Columbia County School District, she overrode the recommendations of English Language Arts teachers for supplementary readings or novels, and some of the novels that she decided were not appropriate for the school was Regeneration by Pat Barker and Dear Martin by Nick Stone. They did permit the Immortal Life of Henrietta Lacks, but the teacher would have to get permission from all the parents before the teacher could assign this book. Not only did Dr. Caraway remove these books from the recommendations of the English Language Arts teachers, but she also removed these books from the school libraries. Now, the public libraries' operations have different standards than the, than the school libraries, than the school district. I understand that. But what I would like the county commissioners to do is to reaffirm that they are committed to the American Library Association policies, which in fact are in the Greater Clarksville Regional Library policies. So, among these policies are the Library Bill of Rights, and this Bill of Rights, which was first promulgated in 1939, has in its, you know, in its, number two is, "Libraries should provide materials and information presenting all points of view on current and historical issues. Materials should not be prescribed or removed because of partisan or doctrinal disapproval, and libraries should channel into censorship in the fulfillment of their responsibility to provide information and enlightenment." Even in the patron request for reconsideration, it mentions this Library Bill of Rights. So, it's in all of the documents, yet nevertheless, the, at the October meeting of the Columbia County Board of Library Trustees, or Board of Library, it was, they determined that they needed to move books from the young adult section to the adult section, and from the juvenile section to an adult section, and other books, and other books they removed entirely from the library. So, what I'm asking from the board is confirmation that all people who want to serve on the Board of Trustees will adhere to the American Library Association Library Bill of Rights. Thank you very much.
There's a motion, a motion for Ms. Caraway?
Yes, yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the appointment of Sandra Caraway to the Library Board of Trustees with a term ending December 31st, 2025.
Second. Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Appointment is done. On to Commissioner Skinner.
Yes, sir. Item C1, File RZ231004. I make a motion to accept the request to withdraw without prejudice, File RZ231004, major PRD revision for property located at Tax Map 078, Parcel 048F.
Second.
This is a request to withdraw, but the original request was a number of units from 30 to 35, as well as add some pervious parking, as well as reduce some setbacks, buffers, or reduce buffers, as well as select setbacks. However, the applicant has asked to withdraw.
Questions? Folks withdraw when they ask. There's a motion, second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Next, Mr. Chair, we have item VA231001. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance section, 90-139, buffers at screen for property located at Tax Map 082D, Parcell 003, to reduce the structural buffer against adjacent residentially zoned property as shown on the provided concept plan.
Second.
This parcel here is actually owned by Columbia County. It is zoned R3, because the C2 zoning requires a 30-foot structural buffer between C2 and R3 zoning. You can see here the actual structural buffer required by code. Due to the shape of the property, the applicant has requested that that buffer be reduced, allow them to get their road in, their driveway in, as well as have access to their dumpster, access to their bay doors, overhead door here and here. They'll be faced away from the road. This area here is actually a Columbia County property as well. It is a retention pond, so that felt comfortable with their request to reduce this buffer.
With the property that you, of what, what did the county?
Basically, I would say green space, if anything. Maybe a little beautification in the future.
In the packet, there doesn't seem to be any additions.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the overhead, it doesn't even show that parcel being there, but that entire area here, basically, bought for a project. When we did Bastard Road, Riverwatch, intersection widening, all that was bought. Houses were demolished. Retention Pond is kind of in this area here. We've talked about doing some land, front area here to kind of buy the area, but they're not conducive to actually any kind of county function, no buildings. I don't see it ever developing into...
Would it be better to have a county initiated zoning and make it S1 for retention? Green space?
Do that. You can free up some other uses in the area. Billboards are not allowed in extra residential, so if you go away with a residential, you can billboard in that area. I'm not sure if that's something you want to do. Doing the buffer clears it up. It, property as is, and then lets the applicant do what he wants to do.
That recommends approval.
Any other questions or comments? Motion is second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next item is a proclamation for Doctor's Hospital.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the Doctor's Hospital 50th Anniversary Proclamation. I don't have it in front of me to read, but it's quite lengthy. No, thank you. Unless you need it.
Oh. Are you here from Doctor's Hospital? You don't need to read it.
I'm going Wednesday to their event. I'll read it there.
Second?
Second.
This is just honoring Doctor's Hospital. They did 50 years of care for the area Thursday, November 73, opened, and so the proclamation and thanking for everything. Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Legal matters?
No legal matters tonight.
Request for review by Mr. Committee. I know we have some executive items and a public comment. We'll deal with that after the executive session, but I think we do have to deal with one issue. There's a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to go into executive session. Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We'll be right back. Want to tell us whatever you want to say?
Yes, we discussed one personnel matter in executive session, and that's going to be taken up in open session.
Righty, so where were we? First one is, turn A on my list. Yeah, okay, personnel A.
I have an item also.
That's Linda Personnel A, so.
Put it first?
Yeah, well.
All right.
Well, actually, that is B, so. The employment agreement is A.
Let me do A first?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve an employment agreement with Linda Peplaw as the office manager for the Economic Development Authority with an annual salary of $45,000, with a phone allowance of $1,440 per year to be effective August 28th, 2023. Second.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve a one-time merit payment for eligible employees for the greater of 2.5% or $1,000 per employee.
Second.
Thank you.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Mr. Richardson, I believe, the next one?
Make a motion to approve $4,116, Parcell 07221. Allen Harrison, $184,200 to Mary Martin, Parcell 0721. Yep, they donate. I didn't care. Or not in a, Parcell 0721. Same right of way. Form widening project.
Second.
For the Herford Farm Road widening project, you do have several purchased, as well as a relocation.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve $161,150 to screen quiet, Parcell 0756, for RA50 payment for the Herford Farm Road widening.
Second.
In Herford Farm Road, this RA50 payment, this is the money we have to pay to make up the difference for relocating a property, or a person from their property. We've already bought the property from them. $161,185 is the amount we have to do to make up for closing costs, higher interest rates, increased costs in housing, make these...
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve the settlement agreement with Christ Church Presby... Presby Inc. project.
Second.
This is a settlement agreement. We did have to do a condemnation for this. We've already put $40,900 in the bank. Were able to work with the church to get to a settlement agreement. That includes the money already in the court system, as well as construction of a driveway. The construction of the driveway and the money already in the court system totals less than what their praised value was, but higher than our praised value, so both parties felt comfortable with this agreement.
Any comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
I make a motion to approve $600 to S1, Parcell 077, $1,200 to Byron Mangum, 530, $4,020. Temporary and permanent easement.
Second.
Girl parcels allow us to install the sewer line from Harlem.
Questions?
How many more do we have to, that one finishes? Got a lot left, yeah?
Not far from that one. Stacy, no copy?
We have about half of them.
Okay.
We're out of 52.
Okay.
Motion is second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to accept a donation. $1,138 square feet. Parcell 0721.
This is a drainage project we're working on. They did agree to donate.
Questions? Raise your right hand. Motion carries. Had one request to speak. Mr. Prasad? Take your name and address to the record, please, sir.
I live at 4555 William Daniel Drive, it's Georgia 308. I began to tell you guys about...
Sorry?
There's a leak hanging on the road on the driveway affecting my house. Houses separating, my floorboards are coming up, my basement is... Been dealing with this for quite some time now. Don't know what else to do. You guys came in and put in French drain. What you have the houses, when you guys put in the French drain, right side of my house, collected the water coming in on my neighbor's property. Sort of a drain. Over on my side, French drain is above going. Water was still coming up from the concrete after you put it in the French drain. Still on the road. No one didn't want to break the concrete at first. Said, hey, you don't want to, um, do anything to break the concrete to help with that problem. Once later down the line, you come expand the road, water is still leaking, just cover it up. Now, driveway is complete disaster. Erosion in my backyard, in my neighbor's yard, affecting them also on the left side of my house. I'm asking for help, know what to do. I don't know what's your recommendation?
Is this, is this water running when it's not raining?
Yes, it's running right now.
Where's that water coming from?
Ground.
So, is this groundwater, or is this coming from a water meter? Is this coming off the road? I feel like, have you been here before, right? Okay, I feel like we're...
Coming off the road. You guys put in the French drain, same day, even like two days after, still coming up.
It's coming up from?
Right from the French drain where you guys put it. Guys said, okay, guys can do. Once went down the line, did the road, broke my concrete driveway, expand the road, just cover it up where the water was coming down. Now, it's running down into my yard, my neighbor's yard.
But is it?
So, where would the water come from?
Is it ground, is it groundwater, or is it coming from the water system? I'm confused.
Stacy's had his folks out there. They've collected samples. They've taken to the lab, tested for fluoride. They've had their listening devices on top of water meters, on top of valves. We cannot find any leak... We cannot find any leak anywhere. Our water samples are coming back showing that it's not treated potable water, it is groundwater. Can't find any leaks.
The water this intruding in his house is not from our water meter. Is that what you said?
That is, that is what Stacy's folks have told us, all the stuff they've looked at, correct.
So what are the things we've done? Cause I've been to your house five years ago.
And after, after you guys put in the French drain, the same.
Matt, what have we done? What, gave us a list of things.
Yeah, we, we've been out there since, it may have seventeen is when we started going out there. We've been out there seventeen, twice, eighteen, nineteen, three times, twenty-one, twenty-two, three times in twenty-three. Not just turning a blind eye to this, we're doing everything that we know to do. I don't think it's a problem for the county road. It's groundwater.
In good faith, we did those things.
Absolutely.
We spent $67,270 and 19 cents.
Hard cost. That does not count, does not count equipment, does not count county labor.
Hey, but I'm telling you what's happened. You guys put in the French drain, same day, the water is, was still coming up.
It was leaking before the French drain, right?
Before the French drain and after the French.
Well, actually, what I hear the county is trying to help solve the problem. My understanding is, not the county's issue, but the county is trying to do what it can to help you, and then real money trying to help fix it, but when it really boils down to it, it's not this, if it's a spring, if it's a ground well, then it's part of the land, it's not the county.
Explain, on the right side by my neighbor, house sits higher. Drain over there also ran it down the street. But when it got to in front of my house, my house sits lower, higher, water running of it. Same day, water is still, right there, exactly where you. Same, spoke to you guys. Few months later, said before, it's like, hey, can you put a junction, can you put a drainage right there at the house? Cause I do have the stormwater pipe that runs across the street, my yard, side of my yard. Pipe. Matt, you did show me like, hey, the water is running, but it's, French drain is catching water. Higher. Put the French drain, I was explaining, I was like, you're putting it above, way above the water, it's not even, water was running under, still gonna go down my driveway, still gonna go into my house. So what you did wasn't helping, I was trying to explain that.
One more time, one more time.
Still leaking now.
But, but one more time, is this water coming?
But it hasn't rained in a year, I mean, two.
But is this rainwater coming off the road? Is this coming out of the storm drain? Is this coming from a broken water meter? Where's the water coming from? I, I don't understand.
From the road.
It's washing off of the road into your yard.
Well, before it was washing off the road, guys, cause the road, uh, 2000, last, this year, came, paved the road, raised the road, right? Still leaking. Our old rate.
But what's leaking? Is, is it rainwater coming off the road or is it?
It can't be.
What is it leaking from?
It has to be a ground, either it's got a leak from a water pipe, Doug's opinion, a leak from a water pipe or a ground spring. It has to be one of the two, right? Help me.
Yeah, again, we've tested, tested and tested multiple times. French drain's there, you know, he's, Mr. Prasad is saying the water's still making to the surface. I don't know what his argument is that we didn't go deep enough. If the water is at the surface or French drain's below the surface, it should catch.
I do have the picture to show you if you want to see it.
So if it's a ground spring, it would be wet continuously though, right? Like right now, if we were to go out there, it should be wet where he's talking about.
Showed me a picture from yesterday. There's.
Is this water there?
There's evidence of the joint in this driveway having water in it.
I've been, I've been there. I've seen it. I've already seen it. I was, maybe it's five years, but Matt, I guess I went with you.
French drain. Right at, at where you, French drain.
Wet spot, it's not, it's not, I didn't see it running down the road. Top of there was a spot, I'm not sure how big it was, but wet spot like that on top of the road.
Is there anything else we can do?
Nothing. I, I've had multiple engineers on site, none of us see anything else we can do.
He keeps saying it's higher than what it should be or something?
Pardon me?
The drain is lower or higher? You said something.
Drain is higher.
Higher.
Yeah. What happened, my neighbor, where you have the, the street, your house is higher, right? French drain, put the water from right here. But the elevation of it, Doug, not gonna, wasn't catching the water, not, not at all. Cause Doug it, that side, neighbor's side, brought his water running off. It lower. Well, I was like, work like that. It was putting it in, I do have video, while they putting it in, water's still.
One more time, whose water is it? Is it our water that we're dumping on his land? Or is it his spring?
It's not coming from the water system that it's a spring and there's nothing we can, it's not the county's responsibility. We've already spent good money trying to help, but it's not our responsibility.
But when you, but I was saying, when you put the French drain in, that it put lower, right? Put it higher on my side. Higher ground. How the road is.
Help me out.
Oh, I wasn't there when they installed it. I, I do not believe Rosenbridge would have changed from two foot deeper from the neighbor's house to a foot in front of his. I don't, I wasn't there.
Have the, you have to show if you like.
Guys are, they're good at what they do. I would assume they dug it, continued up the whole way.
Get closer, is that it?
Then from the stormwater pipe from before, that's seventeen, coming off of the road, right down my, right down my yard, my yard, down the side of my house, both sides of the house. Supposed to be great, storm, uh, stormwater, you guys came in after, done. No reason to put the grate down because there's no, there's no water getting into it.
Happened in the picture.
All from the road to the back of his.
These are one foot contours, so the road starts here. Fifteen foot to that dark line. Fifteen foot to that dark line there, and his yard keeps going. So there's another ten, so that's 25 foot, roll down some, three. Thirty-five foot. Thirty-five, thirty-six. About 40 feet from here. I can't put a French drain 40 foot.
There's no way to, there's no way to do that.
I actually put a 40 foot drain up and dig down. But it is from where you started counting, in front of the house, this is in front of the house. Back of the houses. Front of the house where the water's coming from the road, right there. After you guys put the French drain in, water was still coming, the same day, same day, still coming up. Right at, right, right where you put the French.
But I think numerous times when I came out to your house, I think the question was that we were dumping water off of the road and that the slope of the road was toward your, your house. So that was all corrected. Am I right on that? So we changed the slope.
Repaved the road.
Raised the road so the water would blow the.
The water would go to the other way and go to the, to the storm drain on the other side of the.
2017, I have erosion problem throughout my backyard, straight up, straight up the side of my house, the front. But it is, water was coming off the street, the original street that was there. Coming off, running right down the house, side of my house, in front of my house.
Then we corrected it.
And you came out a year later, put a grate up. I was, there was supposed to be a grate there. The reason why, there's so much erosion, there was a manhole cover, a stormwater cover, right? That popped up out of nowhere. I was like, where was this? My sprinkler line actually ran over the cover, it was buried. Come to find out, there was supposed to be a grate there to catch water. Top of the hill, was to be another grate, guys raised a little concrete thing and, and opened it for grain again. Same damage done, no way like the grates, water is still coming off the road. Erosion, both front and back. No way the water will go anywhere near the grate. Also, stormwater pipe, notice that little black mark across the street? Kept sinking about three times, that's why you guys came out. Catching it, passed on front of my house, my neighbor's house, look, uh, at 4559, little patch over there, water was coming out over there. That's, that's where he caught, you know, caught the water from the French drain. The other side of the house, um, my neighbor's house, there's water still going down, going down the hill, but my house in the middle, in more effect. When you put the French drain in, but the water on 4559, house is higher in the street, higher, ran the French drain, you just ran it across. It did not, at all, my property or my neighbor's property, right? And I was explaining that all the time. I was like, hey, work. Same day, it's still leaking. Cause of the pipe.
Anyway, the stormwater could be.
Where is it leaking from? That's why, I keep, nobody has answered this ring. Where is the water coming from?
The road.
But we raised the road to make it flow the other way.
And then after that.
And so, but that didn't fix it.
Okay, but then after, coming from the road, after that, still leaking, guys came, went down the line, expand the road and make it wider.
And we didn't expand it, we came to try to fix your water problem.
Uh, no, just here you guys came and expanded the road, right? To Matt, road wider.
Paved it, we had to do some.
Because.
Message we were ready. Widen the road?
You did, you did widen the road because you broke my driveway and you broke my neighbor's driveway and you broke the other neighbor's.
Those were, the driveways were replaced because when we raised the elevation of the road, the driveways no longer tied in, therefore they were torn out and tied back, so it'd be a flooded, elevated road.
So we keep talking about 2017, but let's go up to 2023. What's your problem now?
The water, it, it's still there. It's now it's.
I, I find it hard to believe we spent $67,000. As good as our folks are, that you've still got a problem due to the road. I, I believe you got a problem, I'm not doubting you at all, okay? But it's not our problem, it's your problem. You brought a piece of property that the house is how much lower than the road?
We'll turn, go back to maps.
Did you say, how many feet?
I'm gonna tell you just a second, if you got maps, map layers, turn topo, hit the plus button beside topo. Drag it to about 50.
I'd be glad to show you.
I, I'm just trying to figure out where your water's coming from for you. It's, it's, it's not making sense what you're saying. We, we keep talking about 2017 and I see where we spent $67,000.
Problems started in 2017.
Okay, that's fine.
At, at first, right, they, it was said that, hey, the water from the gutter is causing all the erosion.
But I wanna, I wanna concentrate on 2023, not 2017. So tell me what your problem is today with the roads been worked on.
Concrete and everything from the, from the water, the water coming from the road, coming down to the.
Coming from underneath the road.
Yeah.
Now it's coming from underneath.
Cause it didn't, it hadn't rained and.
Now it's coming from underneath the road, but it's been like this since you guys, or you did the road. When you was doing the road, the day when they was doing the road, the water was coming up from the road. All they did was just add more dirt to raise it up and fix the problem.
So there was a spring underneath the road.
Guys came out, uh, somebody came, they came out, they dug like three holes on the road. Water was coming out and French drain, it was where, where it was leaking. Further, right, where. Cause the way how my neighbor, how my neighbor's house sit. It's kinda, kinda like this.
I'm gonna apologize, cause I'm gonna cut you off.
Okay.
This point, all I can assume is that you have, unless somebody give me something differently, you have a spring underneath your property at the top, very top part and it's.
The top of the road.
Blowing it down.
Spring on top of the road.
Are we responsible for groundwater?
Groundwater or a spring under the road or, you know, near his house?
There's a spring. That's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of.
If it's water going down our system, yes, but a natural spring that's coming out of is the ground.
Coming out of the road. The road itself.
We deal with this.
President.
Yeah.
So if the water comes up from the road.
Thank you, sir. I'm closing the meeting.
All right, have a nice day.
Motion to adjourn.
If you'll, if you'll, baby, raise your right hands.